I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing we do is approve the agenda. I do need to make an addition to the agenda, and it's going to be 78, and that is the handout that you just received regarding the temporary lease for the Chamber Bingo due to the broken water pipe that happened at the New Prague Golf Course last Thursday.
Actually Friday morning.
On Friday morning.
One year ago.
Yep, so that's the only addition I have to the agenda. Does anyone have any other questions or additions to the agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition.
A second?
Second by Maggie Bass. There's no other further comments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes. Five zero. First thing, Nick Ken, you're going to lead us through this final plat discussion.
That's going to be an overview here of what we had for discussion at our planning commission meeting on January 23rd. We give us a review of preliminary and final plat of Belzer addition, and the applicant is JJM Properties 2 LLC. Total background, JJM Properties 2 LLC applied for this preliminary and final plat of Belzer addition. It's one lot plat of 15.72 acres. Obviously, this land includes the, property that includes the Chevy and Chrysler, excuse me, the Ford and Chrysler building, which is outside of our city limits, but the city has an extra territorial subdivision review area within two miles of our city limits, within Sur County, and therefore the city has the obligation and the authority to review subdivisions within our two mile area outside of our limits. Sur County does still retain during this time and until we were annexed, the zoning and permitting authority for any building permits. This plan is proposed to basically combine the various parcels that they own into one property, and that's in preparation of imminent annexation requests that we believe will be retained fairly soon, in addition to further development of the site. We'll show a little bit of that on the plat drawings we go forward, what they intend to do for some building additions and parking lot additions once it is annexed to the city limits. That future development includes about 6,000 square feet of building additions and then parking lot paving, and the extension of public water and sewer open property. But tonight, we're just talking about the plat, which is the one lot. We did have the required public hearing at our planning commission meeting on the 23rd of January. We had two public comments received from two adjacent property owners. Number one comment was from Bob Hanson, who's a property owner, basically to the east, kind of the southeast of the property, at 2891841st Avenue. His main concerns for that, he didn't want his septic system impacted by drainage from further development of the property, the car dealer property, and basically we reiterated that while a preliminary stormwater plat had been developed for the property at this point, more of those details will be looked at as we get into the next step of this, which would be a conditions permit process to be reviewed by the planning commission, and ultimately the council that would review along with the city engineer plats for stormwater from the further developed septic property. So the applicants understood that, and he would obviously be invited to a future meeting as we further discuss the development out there. Comment number two is from Mark Deutsch, adjacent property owner to the settlement, and basically questioned why the platting was occurring prior to the annexation. And again, this is because we have the authority to review plats prior to their annexation, and it will actually make annexation more simple, having a platted lots and a one lot, one block description for annexation of that property. We had the representatives from JJM Properties 2 LLC, Mike Belzer, who's in the audience to meet here tonight, and Lori Klein from their attorney's office, and if you have any questions and you're here, obviously again, can answer any questions you may have of them. Ultimately, the planning commission did recommend a three to zero vote to approve recommendation to the council for this plat with the one finding and eight conditions that are in the attached resolution in the packet. I do want to know one thing, following the planning commission meeting and prior to tonight's meeting, we did put a copy of the revised plat in your packet, but there was some legal description discussion among the attorneys, and that changed some things very, very minorly, and that is reflected in the plat drawing you're back tonight. A little more overview of the areas, we're obviously talking about the property that includes the Ford and Chrysler property and buildings, so we all lined it on the air photo in front of you here, Nick. A little further background, so we have this guided as B2, community furniture zoning, so once annexed to the city limits, it will fit with zoning as far as the car sales, and we have provisions provided for in the plat that will often be attention in the future up Third Street Southeast from the existing under-construted Alton Avenue roundabout at Third, all the way over to County Road 3. There's already right-of-way that was dedicated to the city back in the early 2000s, a budding County Road 3. The plat at hand will dedicate the right-of-way adjacent to that, so basically we just have an area between those that will need to be dedicated in the future to make that connection. But we are working on a development agreement outline, and we have not shared the applicants here at this point, that kind of outlines how that would be developed in the future, et cetera, regulatory mechanisms for that, but we're not quite ready for that yet at this point. A little bit better zoom in of the current property conditions, so we'll move on to the next drawing here. So this is just an overlay of the one lot plat, and you can see the right-of-way at the very south edge of Third Street to, in the future, extend through the property, but what this is basically showing that we'll be further reviewing through conditions permit application that we anticipate very shortly. We would review the conditions permit for the few additions to the building for some service days and related, and then the dark gray areas here would actually pave what is currently gravel or ungravel portions of the lot, basically to provide for a more usable property. They're not paving the entire lot at this point. And then just another view of the one lot plat. So the plat itself is actually very, very simple as far as it goes, but it will need to further development applications, including annexation being kind of the end goal here. So again, staff and the planning commission recommend approval of this plat with the one finding and the conditions in the staff report. And just some other quick photos here for everybody. Most people drive by here quite often, such as property, including the car dealerships. Not including just, not the Chevy property, but the Ford and Chrysler. Couple other photos, this is looking from the corner of County Road 3, kind of heading out to the left side of the photo here, and then having a clean on the right. And this photo in the bottom corner is actually a shared gravel driveway that's to two homes that access off County Road 3. This is actually, if you look directly to the west here, this is where Third Street will eventually line up with County Road 3, and this is actually platted right-of-way already, just only contains the private driveway that's shared between these properties. So that will kind of go back to the roundabout at Third and Hanover. So with that, turn over the conscribing questions. Again, the applicants and the representative from their legal therapist here tonight, should you have any questions?
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions. Ken, maybe this has been resolved, but I just can't tell on the fine print of the plat. In one of the plats, it refers to Mr. and Mrs. Topka signing that plat. Has that been muted, or is that still resolved?
So that had to be included because there's a contract for deed that will not be fulfilled until, let me back up here, if I can show on one of these drawings, I believe we'll show that what I'm referring to here, which is a contract for deed currently, and it doesn't really show real well, but it's property, prior to this contract for deed with the Topkas and the JJM Properties 2, there was kind of these triangle-shaped properties at this corner of the lot, and then this corner of the lot, and that's what the contract for deed has not been satisfied yet, so Mr. Topka being the owner that sold through the contract for deed to JJM Properties, had to be a party to the plat due to these little triangle portions of that being in the plat, and the contract for deed not being satisfied yet.
Okay, so the copy of the plat that does show the signature lines for the Topkas is the final plat?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then this isn't really germane to this, but I was just curious, sidewalk fees. Is this sidewalk fee, as mentioned in here, just administrative fee, or is this developer's agreement, if there is a sidewalk, would dictate this payment and how that would be done?
Correct. The developers would actually stipulate when the payment is to be made and what they're for. We have, just in our fee schedule and in our ordinance, if we collect $50 per one lot, doesn't say if it's a .5 acre lot or a 15 acre lot in this case.
But it has, it's just an administrative fee, it's nothing to do with the cost of putting the sidewalk?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the final plat.
So moved.
A motion by Sean Ryan. Second by Rick Seiler. There's no other comments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes. Five zero.
Thank you.
Number two, Ken, I assume you're taking this one elsewhere?
Yep.
It's going to be the Ken show, isn't it?
Did you guys have anything you wanted to comment on before you leave us for the evening? You don't have?
I have nothing, but I would like to say thank you, on behalf of the Belzers family.
So thank you, we appreciate your business and your friend.
Ken's been smiling for many weeks now.
So as we do every year, we have summary of different growth stats for the year, so I'll kind of run through these three reports, and stop me at any point for questions if you have any as we go forward here. So we'll start with the growth statistics, basically as our building permit rundown. So in the report, you see the main things we were down on were single-family homes. We were down to 19 single-family de-cashed homes in 2018. That was down 37 units from the prior year. Therefore, you see the reflected value down about $7 million in those permit values. New construction, single-family home values just decreased about $2,000 to 190,564, which is down about $2,000 from the year prior. We did have four townhome units constructed in 2018. That was down from 28. That was constructed in 2017. And I'll keep referring back, 2017 was our second highest total for housing units ever in the city system, so not necessarily a good comparable. It was an unusual year for the activity that we had, but nevertheless, we're just compared most immediately to the year prior. We're also down, slightly down a number of commercial industrial permits, but we're up about $660,000 on the value of those permits, so a little bit heftier projects than we had the year prior. We had some renovations to Geisenbroi Beer Company, where they added kind of their event, Community Room they call it. Quick Trip was constructed and shows up in that valuation. Goldsmith I Care, for example, moved from downtown and renovated, being vacant, or formally vacant, Drug Express Building. And then one of the other big notable ones was the Rose Hotel, completed their bankroom renovation and opened up in there, so that was where we got most of the value. So we had about $2.3 million in value of commercial permits for the year. The other thing note, so going back to 2017, very late in the year, we had issued the permit for the Praha Village senior living apartments that fell under the commercial value for 2017, however, all over, it was done in 2018, but no revenue shows up or no value shows up in 2018 for that, but that was a big chunk of our year was inspections and getting that project wrapped up and open. Public permits, we were also down by one from 2017 in public permits, but the value was up about $677,000. We had some pretty good projects in there. We had for total $4 million women's clinic alterations at Mayo. We had final renovations to the Memorial Park baseball field, that are 88 Ramparts City Hall, which is a small one, but a big improvement for this particular room. And then at the end of the year, we had a couple come in for, or I should say, before the end of the year, a fitness center renovations at the CEC to bring that aspect into the facility there with the pool. And then a couple days before the end of the year, we received the first of, a couple of permits will be getting on the former fitness center building as that converts over into a full rehab center for Mayo. So that just gives a little bit of a flavor of some of the commercial permits that we had, or commercial permits that were, we call them public, because they're kind of for nonprofits, like hospital, school, or city-type improvements, so a good number of activity in that room as well. And I do have some slides that can just pop up here real quick, kind of the key one, and I'll just put up the housing unit total here if I can find it, and if I can get it to rotate. So this is kind of the, going back to the year 2003, for single-family home permits that we're looking at right here, but as I said, we had 56 last year, 19 this year. 19 is a little more in line with where we have been, you know, going back to 2012, still down a little bit, I think we were hoping for a few more than that, but as we'll talk in the next gen item, with the vacant lot, and just sort of talk about all that potentially affecting that a bit, and talk about how some developers were waiting for the super studies to be completed and other things like that, which may help further development move forward. But, so a few couple more here. So here's the actual housing units, one, this includes multifamily apartments and single-family altogether, so last year we had quite a good year, as you can see there, but, or 2017, 2018, much more in line with where we had been for the previous five years. Overall housing units, this is one I intended to show before, so highest year we've ever had was 2003. We were not to that level last year, but second highest that we have been prior to that. So I think we're hopefully back in a more stable pattern, rather than things not jumping completely up and down, but be a little more predictable. I think, I think we're back in that role in things. And multifamily townhouses and that type of development, I think there's still demand for that. We had a number of the units go up again late in 2017 that were occupied in 2018, and then that just not fewer constructed. Actually, if some of our units hold in the last month of the 2018 year, you get to four, but I've already heard from developers we're going to have more of those unit permits come in sooner than later, just due to the demand that we have for that type of, one level townhome type units for an older population. And I'll just kind of skip ahead to the commercial here, so we've definitely been on uptake the past couple of years for commercial industrial, seeing the numbers and the value here as well, we're always kind of up and down in that, depending on what we have being constructed, but I think commercial will be a good indicator here this year, we'll have some industrial, or commercial projects, hopefully some industrial projects moving forward, keep those values on the rise. And then the public permits, we've always been up on that. A lot of this has to do with school projects that have occurred from the referendum money in the past few years, pool addition, and then on through last year, there was some re-rothing at the high school, done fitness center renovations, that type of thing, so we've got pretty high value going into, even last year, you have, so that's kind of all I have for the report for the year, for our, basically it's our permit summary for the 2018 year.
Anyone have any questions for Ken?
I do. It seems like in years past, we had a comparison of other cities in Scott County and whatnot that you had, that you had included in the packet. Is that something that we can still get, just so we can see where the value of the new home homes are, what the median average is?
So I haven't seen, some of the other cities have kind of taken the lead to compile it together. I don't have that in final form yet, but I can definitely provide that when it's.
Even at a later date, we could find that, okay. I just wanted to see comparison wise where we are.
Yep. A couple other cities I had seen, obviously Prior Lake and Savage are kind of in a different league, but I think other cities that show up on there, like, you know, Northfield and Lonsdale and those, Jordan, Bellway.
Bellway, yeah.
Yep, we'll definitely get that to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ken. We can go on to the next letter B.
All right, so our vacant lot inventory, I'll just kind of go to the map here and go through that review. So that number, this will be a little difficult to take a look at on the overhead, it's a little small. Basically, every lot on the map highlighted in yellow is a vacant lot, ready to build on today or tomorrow, if anybody wanted to build in, bring in a building for a new home. Some of these homes could have, found them on them, some of them could have a single-family home, so just kind of classify those together like that, but we have a total of 128 as of January 1, we just still have that total, ready to go, we're ready to build on today, and fairly even split between which side of Main Street they're on. 53 of those are on Scott County, southern north, and then 75 on south and Sur County. We're hearing from developers that, you know, these lots, when we were at our peak a few years ago, we had over 500 lots of elderly, kind of your pick of the good lots and, I don't want to say the bad lots, but they're not as attractive lots that are out there. A good chunk of the walkout lots were probably the most desirable, definitely the ones that go for the most amount of money, when developers sell them. There aren't many walkout lots remaining right now. And we're hearing that a little bit from local developers and builders, that the variety of lots isn't there that there had been. So obviously through the end of the year, you just heard our sanitary super study at the last meeting in January, but I think that was a good sign for developers in terms of being able to open up more land, should they choose to do that with minimal investment, obviously in the city's part, but basically they can connect on their adjacent facilities and develop, and we kind of talked about some of those areas at the meeting, last meeting in January, but in a nutshell, there's lines within city limits that could be easily developed, should the developers choose to do that, open up more variety of housing lot types if they chose to do that. So that's kind of a good, a good thing to note. Get that development going, and we kind of talked about that with the city engineer Chris Kavitt on the sewer trunk line, to really, permanently set and really open up that east end of town for long-term development. But again, not a ton of pressure, but we occasionally get requests for people looking for larger tracts of land, and I think our super study has provided some more answers to people that own those properties on what they could or couldn't open up for development. And then finally, industrial lot development, we're pretty much talking about our industrial park land, being our eight, or excuse me, eight remaining lots along Sixth Street Northwest, and then Rainquish has one lot directly north of the industrial, or fire station, that will also be available as well. But we continue to have interest in these lots. We obviously will have many sales that come up, go through the EDA, the council, should they get to that point, so. Additionally, we don't, the Moix family, nor the industrial park, has been on the market by the Moix family for a number of years and continues to be available, and we've been actively marketing that when larger site development requests are made, we're able to work with the Moix family and offer larger solutions to land availability other than what we have in our industrial park, where we kind of combo up, you know, 10 acre, 15 acre tracts with, in agreement with them, that they would work with us to sell and accommodate a bigger user, so I think we've got some flexibility in the industrial park class, but hopefully we'll see some activity early on here in 2019, or some sales out there. That kind of concludes the commercial industrial residential vacant line inventory. See if there are any questions in that.
Any questions?
Ken, when you were talking about commercial to buy, so you made a comment about, sometimes you get calls about larger, what do you mean by larger?
So we'll often get brokers that are looking for, back up here, larger than 10 acre sites, and really, all we have available are, for the most part, if you look on the listing, lots of acre, acre and a half, you know, two acres, that type of thing, and the only sizable lot we have ready to go and develop is right in front of Ray McStream Elementary, and that's just not where the traffic numbers are, so I don't know necessarily that we're losing anything, but we'll just get brokers kind of coming through and check on all we have, and it's not a great answer for them to hear that, oh, you only have, you know, two acre lots here and there. Just kind of the nature of these, that we don't own the land, the developers can only make available what they can get utilities to, so I don't necessarily know that's holding us back at this point, but I think we will continue to get more serious inquiries as we continue to grow. You know, our population is nearing the 8,000 congressional vehicles per day, it continues to increase on 19th through town, and I think, I think we're just going to see more inquiries come back.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Okay, if not, let's go to the annual commercial building audit.
So I don't have any visuals for the commercial building audit, but this is kind of a unique thing that New Prague has done well before my time in New Prague, over the past 15 years, but every year, I believe Jim Morris started this, he would go through and kind of inventory all the commercial industrial properties in town, and I think our list, I'm only showing you back to 2016, but this spreadsheet goes back a number of years, I think into the late 90s or mid 90s, where you can kind of track a property, what's, what has changed over the years. So we just kind of go through that every year, working with Chamber, and literally walking Main Street, driving around, going into buildings and asking what they got going on in there, if we didn't already know, and basically the spreadsheet that I've got there highlights in yellow, anytime there's something that has changed on a property from the prior year. It's actually pretty interesting, we try to keep track, if any of the councils ever served on the EDA, you get a monthly update, and try to track that, whether we get an inquiry from a tenant moving into a building, or a building permit request, or, you know, whatever it might be, or maybe the Chamber might let us know, and we'll put that on the list throughout the year, but regardless of how hard we try, we always miss a few, and that's why we do this annual kind of a walk and catch up, so. Took care of this on January 11th, had some help from Brooke at the Chamber as well, reviewing and making sure that we've caught everything for the changes from one year to the next, because Chamber uses this as well to kind of track what's going on in the community as well, and it was a very positive overall outcome from what we've seen over the past year. So 16 new business openings over the course of 2018, that's seven more, or excuse me, yeah, seven more than we had last year, so that was some good activity. We had 21 business closings or changes, closings, communities. Closings can mean they just shut down and no longer operate in New Prague. Changes means they might have moved from one location in New Prague to another, maybe they did an addition to their building, maybe they downsized, that type of thing, and we note that in the report. And that stayed constant from 21 this year to 21 last year. The other positive note was that we're down on vacancies overall in the city. We had 44 last year and we're down to 36 vacancies. This could be vacant commercial property with available, ready to move in office space or retail space, or it could be vacant property to build on. So anyway, look at it, we're down on what's vacant, what's available. Some notable new businesses to point out here. Quick Trip opened and was a new business. Sugar Rose Bake Shop opened, where ladies cupcakes closed. The Depot opened in the former Camellian Cafe location, which had been vacant. Two tobacco shops opened in vacant spaces. I argue the merits of having tobacco shop, but they were vacant spaces that were filled up. Praha Village opened here in 2019, in January. New Prague ATA February Martial Arts opened in a vacant commercial building that had been vacant since it was built in 2004. And I had known another tenant in that same building that had been vacant for that many years was Lonsdale Construction as well. And then Checker Sports Bar took the, the close down, former JT's and opened that up. So very, very positive changes, some good improvements to buildings where people moved in. And then other changes, you know, that we had Main Street Boutique move from downtown onto the street mall, space that had been occupied by the Praha Village leasing office. Car Quest Auto Parts closed, we don't know why they closed exactly, haven't been able to get ahold of anybody to find out why, but they were in the East Town Plaza Street Mall. Mab Clinic did their new and renovated women's center, as I pointed out with the other report, Goldsmith Eye Care moved from downtown and rehabilitated and renovated the former Drug Express Building. Eisenberg Beer did their expansion for their community room. One you probably didn't even notice, but Secure Based Counseling, who offers a number of well-paying jobs, has continued to grow and expand their operations, another expansion within, obviously called the H&R Block Building, which is former Main Street Dental and Clinic Building on Main Street. So they continue to grow. And then some other smaller renovations, Far Most Market had some operations that they were able to do with small cities development funding. And that's one thing I'll point out, small cities development funding in might have a later agenda in that book, extending a contract for that, but I, we expect to see a lot more activity with, with the small cities development funding in the downtown area this year, not just commercially, but for some other residential projects that for certain reasons languished a little bit in 2018, but I think we should have good activity there. So I think it's a very positive commercial building audit over the course of the year. And it's always kind of fun to look back, you know, over five years, it's even more interesting to look back over, you know, that 20-year timeframe where we have the data. So if you ever want to see that, I can email it to you. It's good historical.
Okay, very good. Anyone have any questions? Okay, well, thank you, Ken. That information is always good to have. Let's see what kind of activity we have in the city, so. Next, I assume you're going to be taking the grant?
I will. So I'll drag your attention to the overhead again. So in, actually in the fall initially, the Shaw Community, Metcalf County, Sioux Community had made available some trail grants, funds available to cities. And we knew at the time that Prior Lake and Shaw, P and I think some of the other big cities had kind of said they were interested in, had some larger trail projects, so we didn't really take it any further from a staff level. And ultimately, Prior Lake and Shaw, we did get funded for $100,000 trail projects. Well, we found out in January that they, they did not give away all the money that they had. They had another $100,000 available. And they kind of pushed in the smaller cities, say, hey, if you have projects, why don't you put one forward and have us consider it for funding? So not having anything necessarily immediately available that we were looking to do, we, we took a look at some of our, our projects that were in the queue related to the industrial park, and that's really where we've had identified, I'll just jump to page two here real quick, back to the feasibility study of our industrial park. One of the things that was brought up when, before we plotted these lots, we had stakeholder meetings with potential industrial park users and people that were already in the industrial park. One thing that got brought up by them, as well as people that live in the area, was that there's no way to walk through the industrial park to connect kind of Raven Stream Development back over to the highway or even back into the old neighborhood. Do have a trail through the middle of Thunderhill Park, but now on street side for people that maybe would ride their bike to work if they lived in the Raven Stream area, back into town or vice versa. So this trail and associated network through the development has blue show sidewalks and trails through the future villa of the industrial park. But that was one of the pretty important thing, particularly for potential occupants of the industrial park. They felt their employees should have a place to walk while on their lunch break, and this trail was noted right from the get-go. So we've always kind of had that in our back pocket, that this was a city cost to put that in. We chose not to put that in when we plotted the lots due to the fact that we knew we would have, you know, nine driveways coming out and potentially on the Sixth Street Northwest. We thought, okay, we'll put this off until, you know, more than half at least constructed in there. Talking about the trail funding, well, if we could maybe apply for trail funding now, might be good to just get it in, because this is going to be a city cost to pay for this trail. So we had Chris Cabot work up, up that estimate from the original feasibility study, and that estimate for the trail project is $125,000 total, that includes engineering and bidding and the whole nine yards, which happens to be the amount of a project who has to be funded and then our 20% match. So ultimately, it's $100,000 to construct the trail and then $25,000 for the engineering and bidding and that end of it. So that's actually exactly what the project maximum could be for this grant program with the Sioux community. We took a look, we think, yeah, it might be a little bit earlier for that, but if we can get $100,000 to pay for this trail, the, the trail's been designed, when Paul Hansel Holmes built their building in the industrial park, they had to set their drive elevation to match in with the trail. So we're not going to lose portions of the trail, just be a matter of tying in, make sure the driveways go in. So it's not a huge impediment, just something that we'll have to pay more attention to if we can find it for the trail and if it goes in at this point. So grant application was actually due on the 31st. I had to submit, and then we, with the acknowledgement to the Sioux community, I said, hey, this doesn't get in front of the council until tonight. If for some reason they want to or don't want to make the application, can we pull it? And they said, yes, that's fine. So it's totally up to you if you want to apply for that or not, even though the deadline was technically on Thursday, they, they held it essentially open for tonight for us. And if we get a word, they'll, they'll let us know by March 1st. But what we don't want to happen with this project is get partial funding. We don't want to, you know, have them offer up $20,000 and then, you know, pay for just a little bit of the project. If we get the funding, we can do the whole thing. We think it's worth it, otherwise we think we would just hold off on accepting any, any money. And this is not the first time we've gotten this grant for funding from them, back in 2014. We have $52,000 for the Subways Park Green Meadow Trail. So I don't think this will be the last time we'd ever see this opportunity, but, you know, there certainly could be other cities applying for, for funding, but we think it's worthwhile to make the application, maybe get the trail paid for, it certainly would be used by people in areas, always people on the shoulder, walking and biking through that area, and so it can be a nice amenity and maybe even a selling point for people looking at lots out there for their business.
Back to the, shall I just show the?
Oh, yeah, do, let me go back to the, the airfare here for you. So the argument that we had to make for the, the trail, this is the existing trail through Thunderhill Park, you know, very scenic trail through that area, but this has really meant more for people that get from one place to another, but it also ties into the park. So if you had a business in the industrial park or if you worked out there, you could make the loop safely on a trail along Sixth Street, which is a collector road, back down into the park and then around. There would continue to be one gap here from kind of the west end of the industrial park over to 11th Avenue. Not simply because this hasn't been plotted and hasn't developed yet. And that is in our plan to obtain that, but at this point, we obviously have not had that plotted yet. So that's kind of the idea behind it. And Sioux community really wants to see trails that are more than just a connection, but can help people basically experience the outdoors. And I think this provides better access to that trail in Thunderhill Park, which is a little bit hidden because there's no connection, it kind of dead ends up on Sixth Street here. I think this provides a better, a better tie in and around that neighborhood. Certainly ties to the neighborhood behind Thunderhill Park, South Thunderhill Park, up with the industrial park and then back through, so. We think these were about.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Ken?
Yeah, is there a fear that, that it's going to be in progressive payments as if you're back in the old town where you get $20,000 from them, or is that your, been your experience?
Well, I, I think if they had, let's say other cities like Jordan and Bellwings apply and they just want to, you know, give a little bit to all of us, we would not want to put that much money into the trail all up front if there's thought that we could maybe apply for this funding again in the future and get more of that in the future.
Thank you.
Because we, we don't, like I said, we don't necessarily plan to put this trail in now, but if we get the whole thing paid for, I think it would be a wise thing to do, but from a construction of other lots and driveways, that was kind of the reason we're holding off. So I think if we weren't going to get funded fully, we would just hold off.
Is that going to be next summer then, or is there a time limit once you get?
It would have to be completed in 2019. So talked to the city engineer, so there's still a possibility. Pretty much it was all designed, could potentially be added as an add alternate on the 2019 CFP project, or it could just be bid on its own.
The, the area, north, west and north of this area is, in the comprehensive plan, I believe, all residential.
Correct.
So I think this makes all the sense in the world to provide a pedestrian corridor piece. There is nothing on the south side track.
There is not.
So I think it's important that, at least I would fully support a pedestrian access to that whole area, especially that northwest area, once that gets eventually gets developed and might not happen soon, obviously, but I would fully support it.
If we put it in, you know, now, and then is there a chance of it getting damaged as we start building on those industrial?
That's one of the things we've talked about, that we would obviously have to keep an eye on that and note that very clearly. We run into those sidewalks that are already in when new homes are being constructed, and we just have to, you know, note that in the building permit when we're doing inspections out there, we're, we're on, on top of that. So I think we could, well, be a little more cognizant of what they're doing and they'll have to be aware of, you know, don't drive huge equipment over the trail and damage it, or, you know, are protected if you do, kind of a thing. I don't know, Glenn, if you have any other thoughts about how you best do that?
Yeah, no, I think you just touched on it. They, they got a couple of options, and, and the worst-case scenario is we make them repaired if they wreck it. They can lay things down that they can cross that with, when they're going on big equipment. We just, that was the first thing we talked about, but with this kind of a grant, we don't really want to miss that opportunity. And I think it's worth the extra effort of watching it closer when there's construction going on if we're successful with this kind of a grant.
And this would be an asphalt trip?
Asphalt, they've put one.
Any other questions? Okay.
I'll make the motion to, to approve the, I'll make a motion to approve the, or authorize the application for the S. Scott County Trails grant funding in the amount of $100,000 and to provide, to provide local, match the amount of $25,000.
Okay. A second.
I got a motion by Rick, a second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Well, you can only hope, right?
Nope.
Happy trails.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Did you get your popcorn?
I did.
Okay, good.
Other photos taken, here, set.
That's good.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I am here this evening to look at, to get an appointment for a new officer, Andrew J. Halper. Andrew went through our hiring process between November 16th. It started with open applications and then through the end of the year, and we had a round of interviews just after the first of the year. Andrew rose to the top and was the interview committee's number one choice. A background packet was offered to him. After a background investigation was completed, it was determined that a conditional officer would, offer would be made to Andrew Halper. Andrew grew up in Shaw, attended school, graduated from high school there, received a bachelor degree of sci, of science degree in law enforcement from the Metropolitan State University. And his law enforcement experience includes serving in Waterville Police Department as a part-time officer. Then he was asked to be their school resource officer, which was like a 32-hour per week job. So he went to schools for about a year, and then he was promoted to a full-time officer earlier last year, 2018. I would recommend that Andrew Halper be appointed to be a police officer with an effective start date of February 6, 2019, and a starting salary of step one of Schedule 8 of the local ADI labor agreement, along with receiving step two for vacation as a starting point for him if he is appointed. Staff would recommend that the appointment of Andrew Halper as a police officer for the city in New Prague. I think Andrew will serve our city well. He has great experience. His background was very positive with everybody that we talked to, previous employers, public, city officials. Everybody thought that he did a very good job as a law enforcement officer. Any other questions?
And we're taking another one from the city of Waterville.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we already took the blunt heat of that already at our last Sur County meeting, so.
He does not reside in Waterville, however.
No, I, I understand that, but.
He resides in New Prague.
Yeah, they, they think we're, we use them as their training, our training ground. But then I, Sheriff Mason did say, you know, after a while, they'll steal them from New Prague, and next thing they'll be out of the Sur County, chef, deputy sheriff. So I guess, you know, every dog has his day, as they say, so.
I'll move as recommended.
Okay. I will second that. Does anyone have any other questions or comments? Did you?
I just had some general questions, not necessarily about the candidate, but just to understand the process. What, who, who was involved in the phase one and phase three of, as your memo talks about?
The phase one is the written test. Usually that's, well, phase one is the T and E, the application review and scoring. I do that.
Okay.
Based on their application, and we have a supplement, a two-page application that comes with it.
Okay.
So I go through the scoring on that process. Once that's completed, if they're a, if they're a qualified candidate to proceed, then they're offered the written test.
Okay.
And based on their score from the first process and then the written test. And based on their score from the first process and then the written test, that is calculated, and then they're ranked from there. And from there, we go into a phone interview with them for the third process. And that has me, our sergeant, and then two other officers on. And the phone interview is, is a kind of a first step to get to know them, check on their communication skills, their ability to carry on conversations, the articulate, factual. So we utilize that. And then based on that, then we go into an interview process with the top 10 candidates.
Thanks. And just a general question. With unemployment rate the way it is, how do you feel about the general pool of candidates that you received and the, what's out, what was out there?
The general pool for qualified police candidates, law enforcement candidates, has gone way down in the last three years. All departments are experiencing that. They, since Ferguson and some of the other high-profile media concerns, a lot of law enforcement students just going away from law enforcement into another criminal justice profession, maybe probation or something else, courts, or even Department of Corrections, something other than that. So it's been more difficult to find qualified candidates. We struggle with that, even, even in the last three processes we did. If we're not able to get the top one or two people, it's very difficult to get to the rest because oftentimes they'll, they'll fall off with a background check or something that they're not a best, the best candidate for the city. So it's been extremely difficult throughout. Even Elko New Market, the last person they've tried to hire, they are on their third hiring process trying to get a qualified candidate. So it's very difficult.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, I have a motion by Rick Seiler, a second by Chuck McFly. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Paul.
Michael, I assume you're going to take the southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership item?
I will. That closure packet is a proposed simple amendment to contract for administrative services between the southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership and the city of Dupree. The terms of contract amendment is for one year, basically encompassing the 2019 calendar year. There is no contract cost increase or changes for the administrative services under the proposed contract amendment. Basically, they've been assisting the city with, for our administrative services to comply with the Small Cities Program in handling our 2016 Small Cities Program, which is reflected in a dividend B of the agreement, which is where we wanted to try to assist six commercial businesses, commercial rehab, for rental rehab. We've had no takers on the rental rehab. We have had upwards of, I think, six to eight projects, and so we're hoping to get this portion of the program closed out later this year. They've gone through some staffing changes, both on a project inspector and the lady that we work with for the grant management under this contract, and so they're in the process of replacing that individual. In order to continue to use their services as outlined in the agreement, we simply need to do a one-year contract into that agreement.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
What's the average dollar amount that we spend?
I had brought, or I had copies of the businesses that we've worked with and what that dollar amount is, and I'm just going to bring that with me to my desk. It has varied from, as an example, I think one of the first projects was the restroom renovation at the bakery.
Yeah.
Second one is that we did a roofing project over, a rental project over by the electric utilities building. We've done work with Farmhouse, Ken. We've done work with, what's the electric company?
Yes, Marla Zach.
Marla Zach is filling in.
It is varied in size, and part of it is, one-third of it is a forgivable grant. One part of it is a loan, a tryst loan for up to 10 years, and one-third of it is a business contribution.
But the cost to the city is nothing?
The 2016 project was utilizing funds that we had sitting in an account that had been there for many years, so was trying to find ways to utilize that, and so we put it together. The funds have come through the state under the Small Cities Program, so it's not like you can take those excess funds and go do whatever you want with them. They're covered or restricted for certain uses, and so that's why we tried to put this together to assist businesses in the downtown central business district area for the most part. And then we tried to look at working with them to assist in taking a look at any rental rehab up above the commercial establishment. And what we found is that the state restrictions that are imposed on that portion of the program have a rent restriction component in it, and that hasn't been advantageous to many of the businesses in the downtown, so they're not available themselves of that. So it's my hope as we work with the individual that will be part of the changeovers, that we're wanting to kind of send out postcards and re-advertise that we've got companies left in the program over 2016 and the 2017 project. The 2017 project, which isn't here, and is part of this tonight, was commercial rehab, residential rehab, and residential rental rehab. So it expanded out beyond, God finds it, downtown to assist them, we've got work going on in those areas as well.
Maybe I'm just missing something. So this is a administrative services contract, so is the city paying for some of those services to be able to do that? Okay, that was my ultimate question, is, okay?
Out of the grand proceeds is how we pay them for administrative services contracts, so it didn't cost us anything in that respect.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other than the utilization of existing state funds.
Got it, thanks.
Which is kind of how we put that whole program together, except for the 2017 project, we did receive, after an application, received funding.
What a dollar?
Two hundred and thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Two hundred and sixty-nine, two hundred and seventy thousand, in that range that we've got added to the 2017 program. So the 2017 was a takeoff of what we were doing in the 16, but added in additional commercial, residential, and residential rental.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just one, this chart of expansion, that was it, was that the one we went over, Ken? That chart expansion, and that was canceled?
No, you're on the next agenda, I admit.
Oh, jeez.
That's the next one.
All right. Hold my question, we're in a roll.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the one-year amendment to the contract.
A second?
Second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Now Patty couldn't make it today. She's very sorry that she couldn't make it. I think she's getting ready to go on vacation.
And working with the auditors.
And working with the auditors.
And that's what she tells me.
Yeah, well, they're not, I didn't see them in the office tonight, so...
So after she gets back.
And I suppose I'll have to come smooth with them then, too, huh?
Yeah, we could probably use some help.
Okay, Mike, I think you're just gonna...
Yeah, Patty's recommending, we talked about this change with these special revenue funds, where we had the tax abatement with the chart project, and part of it was for the 2013, 17, 2015, 24, is that when we went through and closed out the project work that we had done with chart, that is, we settled up with Scott County as far as their adjustment because there were appeals of property valuations that were going on that affected a number of the different tax abatement scenarios. There was dollars left in that, and so what we're recommending is that we close out the special revenue funds, 239 and 240, and that those ultimately get consolidated into a separate economic development fund. So we're just basically consolidating into what we have termed Add Fund 206. And that Fund 206 already has funds that exist within it, and so we're just adding to that. And so collectively, that with what's in there and with this add, I think that, about $224,000, I think, that if you take the 173 plus the 16 plus the 31, for those of you that can do math quicker than I can, that I think it's in the tune of about, ultimately, in that fund is about $224,000. And the council has discretion with the utilization of that, but as we've had a couple of these closeouts of different things associated with economic development, we've just consolidated it all into that Fund 206. So that's the first part of it.
So Rick now?
Yeah, now, was that, is that chart project, is that the one that we were out there about?
The one that was at the planning commission in November?
Yep.
Yeah, so that project was related to these, this timeframe, but not directly to the water issue, I guess, that got...
Okay.
There was specific funding, Rick, under this tax abatement that was authorized between the city, the county, and the school district for chart to, when we built, when they built the great big white building. And there were certain expectations to receive that funding. We had some Minnesota investment funds from the state and then we had others that where they didn't quite meet all of their employment or job creation goals, that seized certain programs. So in the fine-tuning or the whittling out, in addition, at that same time, is they also had been appealing values on their property that affected the tax abatement in this program. And so these are some of the dollars that were remaining that tied to those two tax abatements. And so, those are left in our, in our, those two different funds, and so we don't need to just continue to hold that like that. So we're basically closing them out, sweeping those dollars, and putting them into the Special Economic Development Fund, which the council has great discretion in the long term, we decide at the ultimate.
So are they building interest then to them?
Yeah.
When they're in the individual one, and then you're going to combine them and then know that we're not going to use it for so long, so that...
Yeah, you continue to start, it sits there. But what do you think about it? If there's a, if there's a project the size of what that one was, and I think at the time, the square footage of that, Ken, was about 112, 113,000 square feet. It was on 25 acres, and it was upwards of almost $25 million. So when you take a look at what do we have available, should we have a project that either is a local expansion or something that will come to the community, where we might have to provide some funding to assist in the project? We have a small little account set up that funds can be used in that sense.
I was wondering, because there was a drainage issue down on that northeast corner where there was a bit of flooding in that, that one, the end house.
Yep.
I'm just wondering, is that where that, is that the source of our...
Yeah, so kind of as we've had throughout town, we've had very wet years, and this, a little bit off-topic, but as I get right up at that, the pipe happens to outlet into a wetland complex that's over by the single-family homes over there. It was piped underground during this project. I had our city engineer look at that. It's obviously winter, so we can't go out there and really see what's flowing where, but we've had a couple other inquiries related to wetland, water levels and different things, and it's just been a wet cycle for the past, I don't know...
Three years.
Yeah, three years, three years, definitely. And so a lot of people that live adjacent to wetlands have been seeing, you know, what they feel is their backyard being taken up by...
Pile.
By the, by the wetland area, areas they can't mow as well anymore. We had another gentleman down on Central Avenue, same exact issue, not related to that one necessarily to a recent development, but same kind of question. So there's just been more, more large rainfall offensive and affecting these wetland levels.
So that chart money...
Yeah, they're designed to do that. It's still flood plain.
Right, so this chart money here, though, could that money be used to help, help you figure out that drainage issue where, because I looked at it, you're not going to be able to put a ditch down first there. So I was just wondering, this money here, can that be worked into that, but I guess it's irrelevant, but...
Well, I think what, you know, what we're, they're, what we're going to be asking to do right now is just, it's an annual process that Patty does during the audit procedure to look at some of these funds that have actually been closed, and if there's any money in those funds to actually reallocate them to this special revenue fund to be used at our, at the council discretion. Because actually, these two funds, 239 funds, 240, actually, final step now is to close them out would be to transfer this money. And then those funds will be done. And that's all Patty does. Every year, she, she goes through the list of these different funds, and sometimes there may be thousands of dollars, sometimes there may only be $500. But it's just part of the audit, the audit process is, is they want her to evaluate the different funds out there and make sure that if they're closed, you know, don't just leave the money sitting there, you know, move it to, you know, their suggestion, the auditor's suggestion is to move it to these special revenue funds that then can be used for council discretion, you know, for example, if it's something like that. And I think in years past, we've built road, built the road by the pool. Didn't we use special revenue funds?
That was on a Fund 49.
499, yeah.
Which is kind of a public improvement fund that's left when we close out any kind of debt service funds or any of that nature. The council is historically direction those funds there to be used for public improvement related projects. These are actually property tax dollars that if you go back to the time period, and it hasn't been anything, anytime, anything recently here, is it's when we closed out the formal tax abatement, where chart paid their taxes, but under the program they were to be remaded then based on a certain amount of job creation. So these are taxes that they've paid and settled, and part of what we were going through, there were valuation changes on what they were paying because they were appealing certain values within the constraints of their overall property. And so that affected or adjusted what Scott County did on an annual basis, and so these are leftover ones as a result of all of that that did not get returned to them, and there's no reason to continue to let them sit in these accounts. And so we're effectively closing the accounts and taking the small remaining balances or putting them into a larger economic development fund.
Correct.
Which the council really hasn't determined any parameters for its use, other than there will be a date when we have a project that will either have sizable tax-based construction or job creation, and that we may need something to provide as a financial incentive, and that's generally the intended purpose behind what's left here.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion to close these two funds and transfer the funds into Fund 206.
So...
Second.
We got a motion by Rick Seiler, second by Sean Ryan. If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Any opposition? Okay. Now, Mike, the next one, I assume is just related to that?
Well, it's kind of related. What it is, is it's a, it's an internal reallocation of movement of expense capability within the city's 2018 general fund. If you recall, earlier this year, from what we had budgeted in 2018 for the anticipated city's share 50% contribution on the aquatics, originally that was budgeted at about, give me a second, I'll get to it, at about $39,000, when the actual is gonna be about $203,000. And so what it was is Patty's working to put together all of the year-end audit adjustments and accounting. What we are attempting to do is because we had essentially excess capacity remaining in the government buildings portion of the budget and the council's contingency fund, what this is proposing to do is to increase government buildings by $61,000, which was in capital outlay because we didn't undertake the armory demolition project, to move $61,000 of that along with the $50,000 that was in the council's contingency fund and add that budgetary capability to the indoor aquatics. And even with that adjustment, we still don't get all the way there, but it's taking a couple of those that are remaining where we didn't have budgetary expense and where we were decreasing government buildings, decreasing discretionary, and increasing the aquatic expense. So no increase in the overall budget for the year, but a reallocation of expense authority within the 2018 budget.
Well, I've had some conversation with Patty, emailing me, second, I'm not an expert on public finance by any means, but I find this a little confusing that we are, what I understand to be changing a budget in 2018 retroactively. I understand that we, we need to overspend those expense more than a particular budget, but it appears like we're changing the budget to more closely resemble what we actually spent.
I don't know how closely you've looked at our auditing process, but in doing what we're doing, what we're attempting to do is to get the budgetary authority closer to the level of what that expense was because it was an unknown as we started out in the first year. There was a partial in the first year, I believe, 16 to 17, and then 17 to 18. It was just unknown. We didn't have the experience there, which is why the significant underestimating of what that expense was going to be. But if you look at our audit on the public sector side, it's not uncommon to come back with some year-end budgetary amendments or amendments that you make through the course of the year. And when you look at our audit, it shows the original adopted budget, and then it shows the amended budget, and then it shows actual. So I don't know how you did it in the banking world or what was there, but in our case...
Yeah, my previous experience in not just banking, but in the business world and other financial statements, I don't see this.
But in, but in the public sector side, it does occur, and so...
But the whole purpose of the budget is a kind of a roadmap, and if you change the roadmap after you've arrived at your destination, it's, it's not really a financial tool.
Well...
I'm not gonna, I support the resolution. I just will need to kind of educate myself going forward.
Normally and customarily, we might have taken those actions during the course of the year versus taking them a year in. And so what it is, is it's a bit of housecleaning and taking where we had some excess capacity on the expense side in two departmental budgets that we'd use it and moving it to the area where we underestimated that expense. But it does show up and is reflective, as I just described, and you know, the mayor is, the CPA can attest to it as it goes through our process, is they do show in our audit for the very reason that you're talking about, is the original adopted budget shows up, and that you have, if it has been amended or not, and then what you actually received or spent. So you see all three columns of that in our general fund budgeting in the standard audit process.
Yeah, it appears to be a cosmetic.
It does. And trust me, Bruce, I agree with you. I never understood it because in the business world, you have a budget and then you have variances, and you don't move stuff around from one, if expenses come to another to make your budget look better.
Right.
You know, you just, it is what it is, but it's, it's a process that, and if the auditors have wanted us to do, I assume, and going forward, you know, but...
Technically, if you boil it down to the bottom line, as you just described, that process, if we go back under our city charter or you take a look at it, technically, we don't have the authority to effectively exceed that budgetary expenditure capability within police or fire, streets or parks, or the indoor aquatics facility without getting council approval or authority to find ways to supplement that expense. Many times, we may take in additional revenue or unanticipated revenue, and you may see us recommend amendments on the revenue side, which would increase the budget at your, when you're all done, or you may modify and increase some of the expenditure authority. In our case here, all it is is an internal reallocation within the framework of we're not changing the end budget that was adopted for 2018, but we're reallocating the align item within the indoor aquatics facility in an attempt to provide better budgetary authority for that than that which was originally necessary.
Yeah, and I don't know the charter by heart, so I didn't, I don't know that that actually gives you the authority, the budget number actually gives somebody the authority to spend up to certain dollar amounts. That does give some credence to what we're talking about here, but even with this transaction, it's still gonna show the shortfalls of it. So we are giving authority to go over regardless of the budget.
That's correct. In the end, that even with this reallocation is that we don't have enough through any and other internal budget amendments to generate sufficient dollars to...
So the budget itself isn't the final authority on anything. Council authorized a payment for, for items, and it knew it was an over, and that's fine. Here, I'm being caught up in accounting, but it just, it just, I'm just not used to seeing something like this, this magnitude in February of 2019 to change a budget in 2018.
She's picking up as part of the year-end auditing adjustments and those kinds of things that comes back, and we're doing that. Or you have the alternative, because we didn't know that we were going to have this as we budgeted and we sit on that to see what it is, is that we didn't know whether other items might have come up and we used it for other purposes or whatnot. So it is coming after the fact because it's discretionary allocations that were left over in two respective departmental budgets, that we can move from those areas into another one to pick that up. I can show you, if you wanna look at any of the past audits, that I said, shows an original audit, or excuse me, an original budget, an amended budget, and a final.
I think that's very transparent, and I think we're all about accountability, and I think that's, I guess, the only comment I would have is something of this magnitude that maybe we should think about possibly revising the budget like earlier in 2018 because we knew this number was gonna be there.
We knew the number was going to exceed what was budgeted. I did not know at that time until we got done a year in, is that I was going to have that budget capability remaining in the government building and the discretionary dollars.
Sure.
So even though I might have wanted to amend that line item to increase the expense capability, I wouldn't have known that we had that level of funds remaining until I got to year end. In the end, it would have come out ahead, we needed to do that, it would have come out of fund balance, and the variance would have been that we spent more money than we received, which is still the, which is still the case. That doesn't change. We're changing the budgetary amount based on the internal movement of the reallocation of those dollars. Still doesn't mean the full intent of what the expense was, it just narrows the gap.
I'm comfortable. I entered the twilight zone of public accounting.
You can ask the mayor, we bring him in every year, the auditors typically do, and you know, the auditors will be here probably in May, and we would be happy to set up the opportunity. They'll come to the podium to present the audit, and you can hear from them directly that night.
I think there's some, I think there's value, though, I, I wasn't here, but the transparency and the accountability of knowing we're gonna use some of that contingency money and some of it's actually used, thinking of using it up, even though you don't have the final number at the end of the year. I get that, but if, unless you're the only person that has the ability to move that contingency money around, we wanna just make sure no one else is spending it or kind of designating it for this purpose.
It isn't, it doesn't get spent without council approval, the contingency.
Okay.
That is a council discretionary choice. So that's why I couldn't individually move that on my own previously during the fiscal year. That requires council action, which is why we're recording the action and officially taking this by resolution so that we take that up for audit trail purposes.
Okay.
But thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm gonna have Patty come in, she's...
No. No, I agree, I think when Kyle's here, that would be, you know, a good, good question.
But you are entering a different world when you take public finance and public accounting and how we go through ours is that we have kind of a fair amount of what I would term silo accounting, whether that be the general fund, whether that be the enterprise fund, whether that be the debt service funds, whether that be the special revenue fund, whether that be the capital project funds. You see a lot of individual silo accounting under the creation of accounts that are dictated by the state on how we do our account.
Yeah, and I, I understood some of that. This is portrayed as not being actual designated funds, but actual expenses. So that's what kind of for me to, we're not talking about filling a fund that's empty. These are expense accounts.
And you're decreasing the expense amounts in two...
On a budget.
Portions of budgets and increase in another area of that, but not changing the overall adopted budget.
Right. Okay, any other questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to the resolution amending the 2018 general fund budget.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments? Home, favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Next, we got seven eight, that's a temporary lease on, due to our problem we had at the local.
Well, we really haven't had much of an opportunity because it's been rather quick here since we encountered it on Fridays. Glenn was involved working with utilities and some of the call staff and some of the street guys, I believe, as well. But sometime after the Chamber Bingo was completed on Thursday night and they closed up, it was one of the last coldest things we had last week, that when the staff came in on Friday morning, is that apparently one of the water lines that is located in a difficult position outside the existing building, but inside the camouflage portion of the building on the north side, that because of the volume of individuals in attendance, I guess they kind of turned out the heat a little bit, and some doorways did stay open or whatnot because of the location of where this water line is, and ended up with a frozen water line. So there was damage into the upper bar area, behind the grill and out into the seating area. It proceeded to flow downhill, as you might expect, into both the pro shop and the women's locker room. And so our staff worked extensively on Friday, and we got fans and everything on it by plane, followed up today, did not have an insurance adjuster appointed by the lead till, what was it, four twenty, four fifteen?
Yep.
I ended up having to get ahold of Mr. Trupi out of state to see if I could obtain his assistance because we weren't able to get an adjuster. Apparently, we're not the only entity that has had a frozen water pipe claim within each domain. And so we finally got an adjuster that I think Glenn will be working with over the next couple of days. But as a result of that, to deal with the impacts of the water and the wetness, the machine rock and the walls and ceiling tiles and the carpet and everything, in conversations late afternoon today with the chamber, they have asked to do a LG two thirty application to conduct offsite building gambling over at, can I say Giza Row?
Easely Row.
Easely Row, I can't get the row versus the bra side of that. And I'm not gonna say the beer company right either, so I won't even attempt to, but it's likely that we might have to curtail the use by Rotary on Thursdays and the Chamber Bingo. They're looking at it at twenty-one, at seven fourteen twenty-one as interim dates and possibly depending upon how Glenn is able to find, working with the adjuster, who, I think some company came in tomorrow, take a look at the facility, the adjuster being here likely Wednesday morning. So it's gonna curtail some of the activity, just because of the fact that that occurred. So in order to continue the Chamber Bingo, they've had to look for a temporary alternative option, which is to go to Easely Row.
Okay.
So we need your approval for them to move the official gambling function so that they can continue to stay in business during this interim period of time.
Okay. Do you wanna have any questions?
I do not on the gambling, on moving it, but as far as the pipe break, I mean, is somebody managing that? I mean, or was it just some...
It's been an issue. I arrived in 2008, construction was done in 2006, and we can set up a time where we can show you, because one of the things that we're likely gonna have to do is to reroute some of the plumbing to avoid this problem in the future. And as we take a look at that, you know, there's nobody on staff that can answer the question as to why was the building improvement done back in '06? Why didn't they design it the way that they did? We've had to, if you recall, this is one of the more coldest weeks that we've had in some period of time. We have had to baby this situation along the pass with cold weather, and so this isn't the first time that we've dealt with it, and they took care of it all week long. And it wasn't until Thursday night, Friday morning that we encountered this situation.
No, but you had said earlier that somebody at Bingo was hot and turned down the thermostat.
There were about two hundred and twenty approximately patrons in that building.
I get it. I just wanna make sure that, is it the, is there a manager, a city staff person that's in charge of locking that up? Or is it just somebody from the Bingo group in the chamber that went and manually turned it down themselves?
The chamber had nothing to do with it.
Okay, so it was a city employee?
I'm still, I'm still trying to ascertain, I don't know that it was a city employee or that it wasn't a city employee, trying to ascertain all of the factual circumstances associated with this.
Okay, so not knowing that it was either a city employee or just somebody off the street, is there, should we lock up that? Should we get a lock on the...
It's not somebody off the street, Sean, it's that it, it will either end up being existing part-time staff or the GME management contract that we have. So it's not the chamber, it's not somebody off the street, nobody snuck in and did anything.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying if someone's hot downstairs and they will go for, I've seen it done. seen it done.
The whole facility, I'm trying to explain to you, the whole facility that Thursday night at Bingo was, I think they had upwards of, give or take, 220 patrons on both the upper floor and the middle floor, and I think there was a likelihood that the heat got turned down, and didn't get re-raised, and some doors that protected the area for warmth were left open, and so procedurally, with what we've done to try to babysit these circumstances, I'm not sure that because of the volume and the usage of the building that night, that the protective process was necessarily taken care of, and whether, I don't believe anything was intentional.
I didn't mean to imply that, I just wanna make sure that we learned our lesson, so it doesn't happen again next time.
The lesson that was learned is, I think we've finally realized that we can't babysit to the degree that we've attempted to, and likely it's gonna require a rerouting of the plumbing in an effort to try to improve this situation in the long term. And I'm not a plumber, but I'll be working with, or having our public work staff, or the golf course staff to take a look at it, the building, people to take a look at it, if I shows you the area in the building where it was, you understand very simply why it occurred, but it's a, it's a water line that's technically on the outside of the former existing building, that has additional, an addition that was added on the north side, and so it wasn't in a protected, covered, enclosed area, and so it's been exposed for many years since they opened that last renovation.
I think maybe to Sean's point too, is, are there policy or procedures, written procedures, on how to open the building, how to close the building, turning up the heat, down the heat, air conditioning?
That is not, yes, the general know what to do, and that is...
But it's not written down. I mean, so, where I work, we have a procedure for just about everything, and, you know, so if the temperature is below zero, set the thermostat at, fill in the blank, whatever the temperature is, you know, just something of that nature.
I don't believe we had anything of that nature, but there was cautionary directions provided to certain individuals that I'm not certain if that followed through or were taken care of. And so my first concern is to figure out, short of reaching those final conclusions, is what are the current damages, what do we have to do to figure out how to get the facility taken care of, so we can get it back in operation?
No, and I understand the immediate needs, it's just maybe something to put on the to-do list, is, you know, put together a checklist on...
Historically, hasn't been a problem for us, other than we went into the coldest we've had in a long time, and so I can assure you that one of the outcomes in the discussion that we will have will be the very thing that you're describing. Subject two, taking a look at relocating that water line, to hopefully ensure that the preventative methods that we've tried to use in the past years to take care of that water line, that doesn't become the issue of the future.
Right. Yeah, I know that even on the radio, there were recommendations, if you have a pipe that is on the outside wall of your house, you know, to, to take a look at it, if you have a pipe under your kitchen sink that's on the, on the outside wall, open the cabinet doors so that heat can get in there, so just a few little odd things that can be done. Obviously, and hopefully, we don't have this cold weather every year, but even when it gets down to, you know, single digits...
Those were followed earlier in the week, until that night, but we didn't have any events of that magnitude, or with that number of individuals, that resulted in the change, maybe went in a different direction that evening.
Right, okay.
Is the best I can tell you right now.
No, and I'm not, I'm not trying to point blame on, or point a finger at anybody, it's just, you know, thinking about the future, and how possibly to alleviate some of the potential.
Okay, any other comments?
I'll make a motion that we allow the gambling to move to Easenroy.
Okay.
No second?
Okay, I got motion by Sean Ryan, and seconded by Maggie Bass, to approve the temporary lease for Chamber Bingo. There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye in the opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Consent agenda. Any questions, any items of concern on the consent agenda?
I have some on the council table, just a couple of questions. Johnson told him $793, is that for a city vehicle, or...
No, that's for, is it out of the...
Out of 233.
Correct. Yeah, it's a, it is for vehicles that were taken because of an arrest, so they were towed, and then were part of a forfeiture, so we paid for the toll out of crime prevention.
And then, do we ever get reimbursed by the court for that?
If we, when we dispose of the forfeited property, then those funds go back into, but they get distributed 70% to the police department, 30% to the county attorney, and then if it involves cash or other things, then there's 70% to the police department, 20% to the county attorney, and 10% to the state.
And then, Glenn, I don't know if you can answer that, Fund 602, there was, it just says rubber gloves, $223, and it just seems kinda high, or is that for like a big cube of box?
We get a box of them this time of year, when they're needed?
Good enough, that's all I'm...
Because they're considerably cheaper.
And then...
It's for medical device purposes.
There's, this rotor assembly at 941, and the motor, 864, is that for lift station, was that due to the cold or anything?
Nope, nope, just wear and tear in the plackets, the presses that is part of the process of drying the biosolids. We'll be replacing a few more, just normal wear and tear.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions? Consent agenda?
I'm moving to accept the consent agenda.
Okay. I got motion by Sean Ryan, seconded by Rick Siler, to approve the consent agenda. If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye in the opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Miscellaneous. Mitch, you good? Patrick, you good?
I'm good.
Jim?
I have nothing.
Glenn?
I have nothing.
Ken?
Nope.
Michael?
Just a couple of quick ones, one hour to give, he was on the golf course, we're working on that, we've got Glenn appointed as our staff leader to the claims adjustment. The February 21st, the council, everybody has agreed to participate in that event, and will be attending the legislative conference up at St. Paul Thursday, February 21st. We've got appointments arranged with Representative Volker and Senator Gray in LA, so that's all arranged. And then the last one is one that's really between the ED and the Chamber Board, is Wednesday, February 20th, the ED has been holding, the Chamber Board has been asked, we've invited the city administrator from St. Peter, and the Chamber executive from St. Peter, who, a number of years ago, before he was in his current capacity, is the Chamber exec, was the, I believe, the publisher of the newspaper, and we've asked them to come down and talk to the ED board, and the Chamber Board representatives, whoever can attend, to talk about what did St. Peter do to assist their businesses during the construction project that they did with the state, or the various things that they did, how did it work, you know, what was their list of items that they did to interact with the businesses, to see if there's anything that we can pick up on and use and make sure that we do it 2025. We will likely extend an invite to the council, if you have interest to hear that, because we're gonna do it here at City Hall, I just have to make sure that if it's unlikely, that there's a majority of the council that wants to show up, then I'm gonna have to post it as a special meeting. So, I will send out invitations and let you know about that, if you have interest, and if you plan to attend, I'd ask you to let me know, because at this point, it's kind of ED board and the Chamber Board, but if you want to disagree, if you heard about it, or whether you wanted to attend, is that you can certainly set up and make that possible. I mean, we had a chance to go back to the new board, because we just got a new board set, and we have the time, we have the day tonight before we go to St. Paul on the 21st, but that's been on the ED's docket for some time, trying to take a look at that, to invite those individuals, and to speak to them, to talk about what they did back then, about highway, you know, on 69 Friday through downtown, so that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Barb?
No.
Maggie?
No.
Sean?
No. No, I attended the beginner for the league Minnesota cities, and me and Bruce went and, I thought it was, I thought it was kinda, very informational.
Anything else? Bruce?
Just to verify what I, what I understood, and it's so recent, the golf course, has the claim adjuster been at the site?
No, he has not, we just had one appointed, probably at 420, we filed our claim Friday with the insurance company, Volker, that this submitted into the league, we checked all day, and we did get an adjuster appointed for our 420.
Okay, thank you. I figured that one, like you said, I did see that, I thought that was valuable, so I'm thanks to the city, the council, to offer that to us, I thought it was worthwhile.
Okay, good. I don't have anything, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Sean Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye in the opposition? Okay. If anyone wants to go get a drink of water...